Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-four through January two thousand and twenty-five. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the Reactions button or the Raise Hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. A countdown clock will be used to help speakers keep track of time, and speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer? Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Here.
Ms. Sax? Mr. Taylor? Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Announcements? I don't have any. Justin, do you have any announcements or do any?
Uh, no, I don't have any announcements, Madam Chair, except just a reminder that there's a special meeting next Thursday night, uh, the twenty-second, seven P. M. on Zoom.
Good. Thank you for that reminder. Any other board members or staff with announcements? Okay, um, I don't think we have any subcommittee reports. Correct me if I'm wrong. Nope, no subcommittee reports. Minutes, we have minutes from the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. Um, and so if there are any, uh, comments, suggestions, questions, now's the time to ask or to move the minutes.
I'll move them.
Thanks. Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed standing? Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have a resolution. Um, this is for the trustees of Princeton University, Relief of Condition at the Health Services Building. That was file number P. twenty-three, twenty-one dash zero-two-zero R. C. And Relief of Condition at the Eric and Wendy Schmidt Hall Project. That was file number P. twenty-three, twenty-two dash two-three-five R. C. Any questions? Any comments? Any motions?
I've moved to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Capizoli, moved by Julie Capizoli, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Um, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And next up, we have a conceptual review, um, again, for trustees of Princeton University. This is concept plan, uh, plan for the Quantum Institute for Quantum Science and Engineering at Fitz Randolph Road and Ivy Lane, block fifty point zero one, lot eighteen point zero one. This is file number P. twenty-three, twenty-three dash four-four-zero C. Mr. Dugrazia?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may say, although this is obviously just a concept review rather than a formal hearing, the applicant did notice, notice was proper. The board certainly has jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you for that. And you know, before turning to Mr. Dugrazia, I should have turned to Mr. Lesko because we did get, um, staff memo about this project. Justin, do you want to say anything before the applicant?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I begin, um, well, first off, Jerry, I think we said we're going to swear everyone in.
Yeah, so if, uh, you the only staff member, yeah, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's sworn or affirmed?
Thanks. And before I begin, I just want to see if any members of the board have any conflicts uh, with the university. Um, and if so, I can move them over to, uh, the attendees.
Yes, Justin, I'm an employee of the university.
Okay, I'll switch you over to attendee then.
If, if, if you want to watch the proceedings as an attendee, I mean, you're not even required to do that.
Great. Uh, well, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, uh, members of the board, members of the public. Um, I'll be very brief in my remarks, just to orient us to the site. Um, the application is before, before you is from the, is from Princeton University, um, for a new building to house a Quantum Institute for Quantum Science and Engineering, and I'm sure the university is going to explain what that all means. Um, the site is where the, uh, current baseball and softball stadiums are for the university. Um, Ivy Lane, uh, also known as Western Way, at a point is to the north of the site. Fitz Randolph Road is to the east, and the new Stadium Drive Road is to the west. Um, the baseball and softball fields are being moved to the new campus in West Windsor, right across, uh, the lake. Um, you'll see here in this image, uh, which is relatively new, this is September seventeenth, the E.S. and C.'s project to the north, uh, that you're probably well aware of by now, under construction. Um, the recently approved and constructed new soccer stadium is to the south, as well as some, uh, turf practice fields uh, for athletics. A little bit out of the frame, uh, you'll see the university, uh, preschool, you know, preschool, the Tiger Facility, the West, uh, or what do they call it now? The Stadium Garage, Garage, um, as well as some residential homes, uh, to the north and to the east of the site. Um, the property is not located within any local, state, or national historic districts. Uh, and the zoning is E-one-T, educational, of the former township. Um, as was stated before, the Environmental Commission also reviewed the application and had a memo, and then, uh, Dan, Derek, and myself have a combined memo. Um, we could get to those comments at the end, but I think the university will probably cover them. Uh, one thing I do want to note is that, uh, what we went by were the documents that we received in the packet and have been posted online that you've seen. I understand there have also been meetings with, uh, neighbors, um, as well as a website that was put up. We didn't really consult those. Um, I'm not sure what exactly the P.E.C. looked at, um, but, uh, you know, what we saw and commented on was what was in your packet, uh, and I'm sure the university will expand upon that in their presentation, uh, next. So, uh, that's all I have for now, Madam Chair, and I'd be happy to come back to our joint comments at the end.
Okay, great. Um, welcome, Mr. Dugrazia and Mr. McCoy.
Well, thank you.
Both. I'll just, uh, hand it over to you and you can take it away.
And Christopher, although obviously this is, uh, just a informal hearing, nevertheless, our practice has been, as you know, to swear in all the witnesses. So whatever witnesses you have, let's swear them in right now. That'd be Ron. Is it just Ron? Is there anybody else?
Yes, this is, uh, Ronald, Ronald McCoy, University Architect.
Ron, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Ron McCoy, M. C. C. O. Y.
Thank you.
So for purposes, I'm sorry to interrupt, for purposes of, uh, um, uh, you know, concept review, do, do, do we need to hear Mr. McCoy's credentials as many times as we've heard them and as much as we respect them?
I don't think, uh, that would be a good use of time. I don't think we have to qualify.
Okay, right. Thank you.
They haven't changed.
Um, yes, okay, thank you. Um, so many, oh, for the records, Christopher Dugrazia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Wreath, um, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. Uh, many of you probably have heard or read of, uh, trustees, Princeton trustees announcing its intention to establish an institute for quantum science and engineering. And tonight, we're here to share with you a concept plan, uh, for the Quantum Institute's new home, and to talk about some of the planning efforts that have gone into the design. Um, as we've said a couple of times, this is a concept plan, so you're not going to see the typical details that you would see at a site plan application. Here, it's more of an overview of the development plan and the vision that we would like to bring to this exciting project. Um, I think at this point, because we've prepared a very detailed presentation, I would like to introduce Ron McCoy, who has already been sworn in, University Architect.
Great, thanks, Christopher. I'm going to start by sharing my screen. One sec.
And we've submitted this, and I believe it's posted on the website. Um, I don't know, Jerry, it's not a, are you marking into evidence this or, or at this point, or?
You know, just for purposes of the record, um, yeah, let's mark this. It will mark it as A-one.
Okay, A-one.
Great. So let's, let's begin. I will, uh, read off the slide numbers as we go through. Uh, so we're on slide one. So I wish I could tell you what quantum science is, but I cannot do that. But what I can do is to tell you what kind of building quantum science takes place in. So that's, that's the purpose of our meeting here tonight. Um, let me take you back to the university, um, strategic planning document, which is on the website. If you look at, uh, str- strategic planning framework, you'll find a document that was updated by the trustees in June of two thousand and twenty-three. And it talks about the administration presenting a compelling and timely opportunity to build upon and expand the university's research excellence in quantum science and engineering. So that was identified as one of the strategic principles of the university going forward, uh, adopted in two thousand and twenty-three. Secondarily, uh, it's noted that it has underscored, the university has underscored a case for, for an historic, multi-year investment in the School of Engineering and Applied Science that will fully realize Princeton's potential to integrate world-leading study of technology with deep humanistic understanding and insight. So the project that we're going to talk about tonight is both quantum and the School of Engineering. So there are, there are three buildings. Some, some, sometimes I think what the announcement, um, people thought the Quantum Science Building was everything, but there are three buildings, the total of three buildings that were submitted for the concept design is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet. Um, being concept design, those numbers are toggling up and down a little bit. Um, what we're going to show you tonight, which is, uh, pretty much aligned with what we submitted in the, in the, to, uh, town, is, um, the Quantum Science Building is, 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 is a little bit bigger in these drawings than where it's headed, um, but it's around two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. Just let me reiterate what Christopher said, this is, uh, concept design. So I think we have, and we've, we've been very careful to, um, align the amount of information in this presentation with what we typically present at a concept design. So, you know, you can imagine we have a history of different concept design presentations. We wanted to bring this up to the standard of all those concept design presentations. Nevertheless, at this stage, what we have is, uh, a kind of generic and general idea of where the building goes, how big the buildings are, uh, how they comply with, uh, zoning, how they respect the neighborhood, uh, principles of landscape, principles of sustainability, principles of circulation. Uh, so broadly stated, we have, we have a good handle on where we're going, uh, but we are at concept design, which is really what this whole process is designed to do, is to bring a project to the planning board early and to get comment from the board and from the community that we can then take back and incorporate as we move from concept design and further develop the design. So, uh, this is the agenda we're going to walk through. Talk a little bit about how this was envisioned in the two thousand and twenty-six Campus Plan, a little bit about the project overbo, sustainability, talk about the GeoExchange system, which will be the first, uh, site plan application, and the general sequencing of the process. So this is the two thousand and twenty-six Campus Plan Framework, and, uh, to remind you, everything that was shown in a more solid salmon color was anticipated to be a building that we thought we would begin construction on within a ten-year period. Uh, this plan was, the site, the two thousand and twenty-six Campus Plan was produced and published at the end of two thousand and seventeen. Those areas that were in the kind of yellow mask, we said, were candidates for future development within a thirty-year timeframe. And so you'll see that this area that we're talking about in this application, the area, uh, east of Stadium Drive and south of Ivy Lane is an area that was, uh, colored in that yellow mask. So we, we knew, this is a great example, I think, of the benefit of a framework. Framework provides opportunities as the university progresses and grows and advances its strategic mission. When we did the Campus Plan in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, quantum was not on our radar. But we knew at that time that the neighborhoods of engineering and, and applied sciences and natural sciences needed to grow, and that we needed to provide, uh, uh, opportunity sites for that growth. And so we identified that, that land that I just pointed to as an opportunity site. Now, I'll talk a little bit more about the cap, two thousand and twenty-six Campus Plan. This diagram, uh, whereas the, the diagram I just showed was about a kind of framework for opportunities, this diagram focuses on what we call the east-west connector and a north-south connector. These are more, uh, physical planning strategies that are designed to ensure that the campus would grow in a way that is coherent, integrated, and well-connected. Uh, you've, you know, you know that we've been very active on that east-west connector. Uh, we're showing here the, what we called back then the Lake Campus. Now we're calling it the Meadows Neighborhood. And this, the Campus Plan showed a, uh, pedestrian and bicycle bridge over that Carnegie. Um, the bridge is not happening right now, but Meadows Neighborhood is taking shape, and we're also, uh, working to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety up and down Washington Road to connect, uh, the Meadows Neighborhood to the existing campus. And then, this is yet another drawing from the two thousand and twenty-six Campus Plan. This is a detail of that, uh, framework plan that I showed you, showing the area east of the stadium, east of what was called East Stadium Drive back then, now called, now called Stadium Drive, uh, between Fitz Randolph and Stadium Drive and south of Ivy Lane, Western Way. So again, just saying, we had anticipated developing this property within a thirty-year, uh, timeframe. Um, the buildings on the north of Ivy Lane, back when this was published, was a, uh, capacity study for, we wanted to ensure ourselves that the first generation of buildings for environmental studies and C.'s could fit on those sites, and, uh, they did, they do, and they're under construction. As a reminder, as I said, uh, if this project is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet as submitted, those buildings are about six hundred and seventy thousand square feet. So this is a tad smaller as a, as a complex of, of buildings. Uh, just on the left of the slider, the, the fundamental campus principles, those, these are principles by which we, we think about the campus and all of our projects. They address, uh, issues of providing an integrated environment for teaching, living, and learning, uh, respecting the distinctive sense of place, fostering, uh, opportunities for positive interaction and exchange, sustainability, and serving the communities that extend beyond the campus edges. All right, so now, a little bit about quantum science. As I said, um, I'm not going to explain the science to you, but I'll explain the facility to you. This is taken off of the webpage from the Quantum Initiative, and it shows, uh, four different areas of expertise that Princeton University has. There's a description that quantum scientists use. They call it the Quantum Computing Stack, and the stack are all the different disciplines that come together. Uh, there are layers of the quantum system, from everything from elementary particles used to store and compute informations, which are called the qubits, to the physical and logical systems that control and manipulate the qubits, all the way to applications. Um, different universities around the world are advancing very rapidly in this area. Many of those universities have expertise in one or two of these elements of the stack. Princeton has unique expertise in all four elements of the stack. And so this is a multidisciplinary effort that will draw from faculty and researchers across the university, in particular physics, electrical and computer engineering, and computer science. Uh, but we feel like we are uniquely poised to, uh, contribute, uh, all of our expertise to the advancement of, uh, quantum science through the Quantum Initiative. This is a statement of the value proposition. We show this in all of our presentations, just to share with you how we think about the project, uh, as its, uh, ability to meet the strategic goals of the university. We define a value proposition as a promise to ourselves about what we will deliver in the project, and we use this, I'm sorry, Jerry, I totally forgot to identify the slides. Right, slide seven.
Thank you.
We use this to guide the development of the project and monitor the success of the project against these elements. But you'll see here some key words, keywords identified, uh, beginning with the GeoExchange. Now, that doesn't relate to this particular building, but it does relate to our effort to become carbon neutral by two thousand and forty-six. So we will, we will, um, our plan is to use the entire site for the GeoExchange system. It does then address, uh, to accommodate world-leading systems for quantum science, uh, about collaboration, uh, cap, respecting campus traditions, and creating a welcoming academic home. Similarly, we have a value proposition here now in slide eight for quantum, for, uh, School of Engineering and Applied Science, which has to do with, uh, to accommodate, uh, a rapidly growing community at state-of-the-art facilities. You see, word keywords here like interdisciplinary, flexibility, uh, innovation, entrepreneurship, and sustainability. On slide nine, this is a view of the site, uh, very similar to the slide, the slide that Mr. Lesko just showed. Um, looking to the northeast, showing the, uh, Clark Field in the foreground, Strubing Softball Field, which in both these fields will move to the Meadows Neighborhood, and then Ivy Lane and Fitz Randolph. So this is, these are the boundaries of, of the site. Uh, slide ten here shows the, um, general disposition of the different program elements. So as I mentioned, there are three fundamental program elements. One is quantum, the other one is E.C.E., which is electrical and computer engineering, and the third one is mechanical and aerospace engineering. They will roughly sit in these portions of, of the site. Slide eleven, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the, uh, the next couple of slides, the zoning boundaries and, uh, conditions that will define the envelope within which we can, we can, uh, design the building. You'll see here in this particular, the, the zoning envelope is designed is, is basically determined by three factors. One of them is a setback from, uh, property boundaries, such as the, the boundary between the, um, E-one-T and the R-two-B district. Uh, another one is a, uh, height-to-setback ratio, which is defined also at that boundary to be three feet to one. So every three feet, um, every one foot of vertical elevation, we have to step the building back three feet. That ensures a kind of gentle transitioning of the height of the building, uh, within, within the, um, E-one-T district down to meet the, the edges of the site. And then the third condition is that overall height, uh, constraint, which is on this land in, in the E-one-T, and that height of limit is one hundred feet. You'll see here, uh, within the site, a, a dashed green line with a dimension of sixty feet from the nearest curb. That sixty-foot setback is something that, that, uh, is not a zoning obligation, but we have embraced that as a, as a setback that, and that respects the traditions of other buildings that are set back on the adjacent streets. So if you look north on Fitz Randolph, you'll see the homes on Fitz Randolph are more or less set back about sixty feet. And if you look east on Western Way, they are more or less set back by about sixty feet. So that's a voluntary setback that we respect, uh, on the edges of, of the site. Okay, now, on slide twelve, um, this is, these are, these are two diagrams in the upper part of the drawing and a section in the lower part. The two diagrams show a hypothetical zoning envelope. Uh, the one on the left, upper left, shows the three-to-one setback, and the three-to-one setback is from that property line between the R-two-B and the E-one-T zone on the northern side of the property. What that means is that, um, from that, from that property line, we have a three-to-one ratio, which is diagrammed down in the lower right, that we have to respect as we move away from the site, away from that property line. And that, that red-colored area shows the extent of that, that, uh, three-to-one ratio. It tapers off in this, uh, western part of the site because we no longer, because the, uh, the R-two-B zone ends, uh, and doesn't continue. Now, on the upper right drawing is what we call an enhanced envelope. We, we agree that to be a kind of good neighbor on the site, that that three-to-one setback is a good zoning constraint. And so we're voluntarily, uh, uh, complying with a three-to-one setback on the Fitz Randolph side. And you'll see as I go through the drawings that what that ensures is that the building, as I said, terraces down and meets, meets the street in a more gentle form and a, and a smaller mass. And then in the lower right of this drawing, simply a diagram of that, of that setback. It shows, um, there's a sixty-foot setback for the ground level. It's not, and then there's a, um, a three-to-one setback for the massing as it steps away from the, uh, R-two, uh, B-zone district. Now, um, the site plan on slide thirteen, this is, um, the current conceptual design of the three, uh, buildings. On the eastern, eastern side of the site is the quantum facility. On the northwest corner of the site is the, uh, Electrical and Computer Engineering Facility, and on the bottom left is Mechanical and Aerospace Engineering. Some of the features to point out here, you'll begin to see it as I throw, show that in three dimensions. You'll see some shadow lines here as the volume stepped back from Fitz Randolph and also stepped back from Ivy Lane. That's that three-to-one setback, um, in, in effect. You'll also see here that this is setback even further from that sixty-foot dimension that I showed. We think that this enhanced landscape setback at this neighborhood edge is a positive development, so we want to ensure that. Also, I would say that we are designing this project, I think, as the first generation projects that are particularly mindful of the new stormwater regulations, the twenty-one-hundred-year rainfall. And we see stormwater regulations as a form determinant. So you'll see a lot of roofs colored here in green, indicating there will be green roofs. And then the landscape to the, throughout the site will be designed to comply with, uh, the, the, the recent, recently adopted zoning regulations with, with green infrastructure and onsite retention of all the water through, uh, rain gardens and stormwater basins. Moving on to slide fourteen, this shows the site circulation. We want the buildings and the site to be a really typically campus tradition, so porosity and movement through the site for pedestrians, cyclists, fully ADA compliant, one hundred percent ADA compliant, are the goals of the project. You'll see some of these pathways connecting the new E.S. and C.'s Neighborhood on the north side of Ivy Lane. Uh, you'll see the pedestrian pathway coming southward, uh, along the, what we call the North South Connector on the east part of the, of the C.B.E. site. And then you'll see the pathways that go through the site, down, down through Robert Stadium, connect to the Stadium Drive parking garage that Mr. Lesko referred to, and also at the southern edge of the site, that will then connect to a pathway that goes through the, between the football stadium and Weaver Track and connects over to physics. That pathway is actually an important pathway because the home for physics is just here on the, uh, western side of Princeton Stadium, and there'll be strong connections between the physics department and the Quantum Institute. So we're going to have a strong connection across the southern part of the site in a pedestrian-friendly way, uh, to the, uh, Quantum Building, as well as to E.C.E. So we're really trying to knit this together into the campus. We're using landscape and campus traditions of pathways, uh, to make all those connections. I will point out here in this diagram, you'll see, I'll show it when we get to the vehicular slide. You'll see, um, the major loading dock here is at the southwest corner, so we're keeping the loading dock away from the neighborhood. There is a, a minor, smaller loading dock, um, that is at the southwest corner of the Quantum Building. That'll be a secondary loader dock for, for particularly quantum. That'll be a secondary loader dock for, for particularly quantum deliveries. But that'll be at a, at a kind of cul-de-sac that is not a through street. Slide fifteen here shows the bike paths, which pretty much follow a lot of those pedestrian paths. So there'll be a bicycle friendly connections throughout the site. We'll have bicycle facilities. We don't have details on. How we're, how and where we're going to park the bikes. That's, that's not something we develop at concept design. I know the P E C memo asked us to talk about that. I would say that's a work in progress, but. That's something to be, something to be developed as the design progresses. A slide sixteen here shows the vehicular circulation. As I said, the primary loading dock. For all three buildings will be at the southwest corner connecting to M A E below ground. All of these buildings will be connected by a service network of corridors. I'll also say that the, the entire site. Slopes from the high side at the north to the south side. I think there was a question from the staff report. Asking us to show how, how the buildings would fit into the natural slope of the building. It's about a single story difference between the upper and lower level and the building steps down the hill to take advantage. Of that so that it's interested, it's centered off grade and accessible entrances on the south. And it's centered on grade at Ivy Lane from the north inaccessible entrances. This also shows a restricted access drive from stadium drive that connects to that secondary. More lightweight loading area at the southwest corner of quantum. This is, this would be for us very similar to what we do at the art museum. Art museum traffic comes off of Elm Drive, which goes to the center of campus. And goes in front of some academic buildings, some dorm buildings. And then comes to a simple loading dock and then reverses back to the main driveway. So that's how this will be handled. Slide seventeen, these are some elevations and sections that give you some clues to the height. And stepping back in the massing of the building. So we look at the top drawing. We're looking at an elevation looking south, we're from Ivy Lane southward. You'll see on Fitz Randolph roadside, that three to one setback ratio. You'll see how the building sits within that three to one setback. You'll see also then the overall one hundred foot height limit. That's a part of the zoning for this neighborhood. And you'll see that the building for the most part is well below that one hundred foot height limit. This dark gray box in the background here is one of the mechanical shafts. And these sort of truncated forms in the foreground in front of that. Are light wells that bring skylight into the main lecture hall on level three. You'll see that most of the building is a three story mast. Some pieces of it will pop a little bit higher than that. But that three story mass steps down consistently around its perimeter. To bring the scale down to the neighboring context. You'll also see the tradition of campus portals and connections. So there'll be, the entire complex will be joined. As I said, below ground by a service corridor, but also at levels two and three. So at grade, one can go in any one of the buildings, level two and level three, one can go throughout the entire complex. So it's fully connected on levels of two and three with these bridge connections. The middle drawing shows the east west section. So this is just pretty much a section through that same elevation that I showed. You're looking here, you're seeing the three to one setback and now you're seeing the full basement, the full, full below grade level. Which, as I said, terraces down, it connects pretty much a little bit lower than grade at the southern part of the, the southern part of the site. And then the bottom drawing here. Is a section looking east along Ivy Lane. So you'll see the existing massing with environment of studies and C's building here for comparison. You'll see the three to one setback from Ivy at the eastern end of the site. You'll see the, those light wells bringing skylights down into the sort of main atrium and lecture hall area of the building. The lower level, the grade differential and the overall height restriction of a hundred feet. And again, the building sitting well below that. Alright, now slide eighteen, I'm going to show a few slides here that talk about some of the principles of landscape. This is an area of the campus that has some beautiful tree lined streets and we will preserve and restore any trees that we need to. So that we maintain that, that tree line street edge. So that'll be along Ivy Lane and Fitz Randolph, that'll really unite the building into the neighborhoods. So that's one of the, the landscape goals for the project. Is to respect that tradition of the tree line streets. There's also a native woodland not far from here. It's a little bit discontinuous. But we want to, we want to respect that native woodland that happens along the northern edge of Lake Carnegie. Enhance the habitat, enhance more settings for wildlife. And so that enhanced landscape buffer that I shows you at the eastern edge of the site, we think can serve some of these, some of these ambitions. On slide twenty, we will, we'll have our normal palette of native seasonal plants. As we always do, we're again working with James Corner Field Operations on this project as we do on all of our projects. And we're very familiar with the conversations and the goals of the municipality around landscape strategies. And slide twenty one, just shows some examples of courtyards and quads which are essential features of the Princeton campus. And you'll see this building is organized as a contemporary version of a quad complex. So the three buildings will surround the central quad. Corridors and gardens will occupy those quads. There'll be places for reflection, for relaxing, for socialization throughout those quads. And I'd say a rich landscape palette will be in those quads. Slide twenty two shows some of our recent examples of, of green roof strategies. On the left is the Anlinger Green Roofs. And on the right are the Green Roofs at Lewis Center for the Arts. As I mentioned, the stormwater strategy for this project will demand. Intensive green roofs for part, for some of the green roofs to help manage stormwater. We're very interested in integrating those green roofs with solar panels. So the building will be both solar ready and green roof. To anticipate our future continuing growth of our onsite renewables. And then slide twenty three, reiterate some of the things I've already talked about in terms of designing for stormwater management. New regulations to twenty, including the twenty one hundred rainfalls. So I'd say, you know, this simply describes the palette of strategies we'll use. We'll use green roofs. Fire retention and rain gardens, horse and permanent pavements. The strategy for the, the kind of composition of those, location of those is to be determined as we move forward. You'll also see opportunities for courtyards and social spaces throughout, throughout the project. Slide twenty four, this is a good representation at this stage of the project of the conceptual massing. We're looking. From the northeast toward the southwest toward Princeton Stadium. You'll see Ivy Lane going through the middle of the site here and you see the new E S and C's project north of Ivy Lane. This gives you a good sense of that enhanced setback from Fitz Randolph. The gentle stepping with that three to one terracing from Fitz Randolph and also from Ivy Lane. You'll see the bridge connections and the kind of connectivity of the complex at levels two and three. Once you come into the central quad, all of the entrances to the buildings will be off that central quad. You see the north south connector continuing through the site, which will connect to the C's neighborhood north of it. And then there'll be a pathway through to the eastern end of the site. Quantum is number one, E C E is number two, and M A E is number three. Twenty five, turning around and looking back the other way. This is a good view to focus on the loading dock, which I said will be off of stadium drive at the southwest corner of the site. Maybe a bit better sense of the courtyards and the kind of massing throughout the courtyards. Then the next few slides are some early conceptual renderings at street level, at eye level, as we look around, around the complex. I think you'll see the same. Characteristics on all of these views, which are, I'd say, you'll see the landscape principles beginning to take shape. The tree lined edges, the enhanced setbacks, the stormwater landscapes, meadows and things like that. You'll see the more gentle massing of the building stepping away from these edges. This is looking on Ivy Lane. Toward the west. We will continue, if you recall, we have a, these advisor shoulders on the side, on the sides of Ivy Lane. We want to make Ivy Lane a very. Quiet, slow moving, safe, multi. Shared street. So we will continue that shared street strategy. To all the ways to Fitz Randolph along Ivy Lane. So it becomes a complete street. Slide twenty seven, we're in, in the courtyard here looking toward the. East, this little red diagram here shows you where we're looking. So we're looking through the quad of the central quad of the project. I wouldn't say we've designed this landscape other than this just simply says that there will, there will be a central landscape. You'll see the site sloping from the northern portal where Ivy Lane is down to the southern portal. So this shows you how the building begins to knit, knit into the site. And although, all those pathways inside that quad will be fully accessible as will all of the entrances into the buildings. Slide twenty eight, this is looking really at the northwest corner of the site, looking down stadium drive. The stadium is just kind of shadowed here on the right. And the same strategy, the, the tree lined edges, the enhanced landscape buffers. And the gentle terracing of the building with that three to one setback. Twenty nine is looking north along Fitz Randolph. So we're on the sidewalk here of Fitz Randolph. With that enhanced setback that I talked about. You'll see the lower southern portion of quantum beginning to reveal itself at the southeast corner of the site. And the low massing stepping back to the higher massing, which is sort of behind these trees here. As, as the building steps away from Fitz Randolph. Alright, now the next couple of slides, just we'll talk about again sustainability goals. At concept design, we established the goals for the project. We have lots of experience implementing these goals. So we've, we have a good roadmap about how we will do it. But at this point, we've just simply identified the goals and you'll see the, the wide array of some of the primary objectives. And our, our, our goal is to integrate each of these things so that they work together. I'll point to a couple of these just to reiterate them. The energy one is very important because it reinforces. The geo exchange system that will underlay the site and part of our goal to be carbon neutral by twenty forty six. Carbon is both reflected in operational carbon through that geo exchange system. But also in our aspirations to make, to use low embodied carbon materials, particularly in the structure, mass timber and concrete. Healthy habitat is something I've talked about through the landscape strategy. Stormwater management is obviously very, very important in terms of the, in terms of regulations and the health of the site. And you see other, other issues here. Diversity, equity, inclusion is something that we are really focusing a lot on in this generation of projects. We actually have recently commissioned maybe a team of behavioral scientists and building scientists to conduct. Post occupancy evaluations of our projects. And to give us tools and methods for evaluating the success of creating these welcoming environments. In our academic buildings that'll then inform each generation of new buildings. Slide thirty one begins to just, a lot of text here, we'll, you'll have a chance to review this as you, as you get, as we, as you get a chance to review this presentation. But it talks about ambitions, aspirations for water, waste, site habitat, habitat. Energy and carbon. I'm not going to go through the details, but if we have questions, we can talk about them. And slide thirty two continues those topics of sustainability goals in terms of health and wellness. Materials, benchmarking the building will be designed to achieve lead gold. And then the D E I aspirations. Now, the last slide here, slide thirty three talks about the geo exchange system. Our goal, actually, we have one more slide, but this, this slide describes the geo exchange system. Again, a concept design, our, our strategy is that the entire site. Will be used for geo exchange. We have not laid out the actual grid of the geo exchange wells. There will be some sensitivity to vibration relative to some of the quantum labs and things like that. But we, you know, for all intents and purposes, the entire site will be utilized to help achieve our carbon neutrality goal. And then finally, slide thirty four, this is simply just the sequencing of, of the project. We're here tonight with a concept hearing. We will follow this with a site plan number one, which will be for the excavation and geo exchange system. That allows us to move ahead with that part, which requires all separate engineering and implementation. That'll be followed by a site plan application number two for the quantum institute building. And then the subsequent buildings, electrical and computer engineering and mechanical and aerospace engineering. Will follow the quantum institute building. We have not established the final schedule for those. So site plan one and two are, we're working, we're working on those. Those are our highest priority. The second phases will, will follow, second and third phases will follow that. That is what we wanted to share. I will stop sharing and I can go back to any one of these slides to answer questions. And we welcome the discussion because as I said, this is concept design. And we use this input to help our, guide ourselves as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. That was fascinating. And I'm very relieved that you did not try to explain. Science. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just to get things started. I know that, well, this sounds like it could be very computer intensive and I know that. That can be very energy intensive. And I'm curious whether you've looked at. You know, from this idea of carbon neutrality and. Whether, whether there are any special measures that are required for this building either onsite. Or off. To balance the energy usage for the special. Uses of this building as opposed to the regular energy use around heating and cooling and so forth.
We have experience with this at Anlinger Center for Energy Environment, which is a very large clean room. And the, the conundrum of a building like that is that. It enables world-class research to solve the energy problem. But as you note, it takes a massive amount of energy to solve energies, the world's energy problems. I would also say, so we're aware of our experience of how to solve that or how to deal with it. We don't, we don't, you know. The, the goal would be to actually take waste heat. Out of the, out of the systems of the building and reuse that to preheat. Air or, or systems in the building. So that's a strategy that we have as our kind of goal that we're exploring. That's the most specific example I could give to you. But also. We, we look at the campus as a whole system. And including this building, our goal is still to be a carbon neutral operationally by twenty four, forty six through the geo exchange system. And through the growing electrical renewables we have on campus. And through the renewal, through the green, greening of the grid. So I hope that helps a little bit explain that we're aware of it. We have experienced it at Anlinger. Waste heat is a great opportunity, but we haven't developed specific strategies.
Yeah, that helps some. I'll let Owen, Owen go.
Go ahead, Owen.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCoy, you mentioned that these buildings were not originally part of the two thousand seventeen plan. You know, this is another giant building. Do you have any idea how many? People are going to be working in the building and is this stadium garage going to be able to accommodate? Parking for, for these.
Stadium garage was, was designed and sized for this growth. So we did not know that it was quantum that was going to be the growth, but we knew the campus was going to grow. So the stadium drive was designed and sized for this growth. The project will require a parking and transit, traffic analysis and will submit a parking and traffic report with a site plan application. To verify our assumptions. So that, that's how we're handling that, that issue of traffic. We, it's important to say that. Quantum, M A E and E C E exist already on the campus. So these are all not new buildings. This is vacating the E quad. But there is, there is growth. I would say that. Day one, when the building is occupied. There will be about seven hundred and sixty occupants. And then when the, and we plan, we planned this for a twenty forty two horizon. So the project is designed to accommodate growth to twenty forty two. And in twenty forty two, there'll be an additional plus four hundred and forty people in the building. So that's a, that's a gradual growth between, I mean, that growth is from today because these departments are on campus today. They will continue to grow. As they get ready to open the building and then it will grow to twenty forty two. And so that's, that's, that's what we know about the growth of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions from board members?
Can I just come back, can I, can I just come back and say that?
Oh, sure.
Again, again, again. And maybe in more detail to, to clarify that. The, the planning framework identified this as a growth opportunity. So we knew we were going to be building on the site and we knew it was going to be for, for something related to engineering and natural sciences. We just didn't know the discipline. So just to feel, make sure that I'm clear about that.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, and then Ms. Capazoli.
Yeah, I, I wonder, Ron, if you could go into a little bit more detail about the accessibility, especially in that center courtyard. I noticed that the path that's between the building and Fitz Randolph seems to meander a bit. You know, which gives you the capability to transition. Vertically at a, at a shallow slope, but the, the path through the middle of the courtyard. Does not switch back at all. And so just to comment, I know you said it's about a floor drop. Across the site, but. across the site, but you know, what kind of do you imagine that that pathway through that central courtyard can just be a two percent slope and accomplish what it needs to? Or would there be some steps down and other, you know, ramps that would go in that just aren't shown yet?
It's a little bit of both. We want it, we want to keep all of our ramps under five percent, which means that they don't have to have railings or, or things like that. We want also the main system to be the accessible pathway. We don't want to have a kind of set of stairs for able-bodied people and a secondary accessible pathway for disabled. So I would say that the goal will be a design that makes a five percent pathway through the site for all users. And we have a mantra that all users go through the front door. And so all users also use the main pathways. That's our mantra in terms of accessibility. We haven't designed it yet. Early on, the level of conversations we've had so far is that we looked at, should we have a terrace landscape in there? And we just said, no, we don't want to terrace landscapes because that inevitably requires stepping and steps between one level of terrace and the other. So all I would say is that it is a bit continuous and fluid. I would say also on the eastern, the pathway on the eastern side is probably more robust curvature than it needs to be. It's a kind of, it's a kind of, so don't use that as a measuring stick. That's a picturesque landscape that is probably has more meandering than it, than it needs to have. But it also has a sidewalk next to the street in case you don't want to meander. But we're hoping people will meander and enjoy the landscapes.
Got it. Thanks.
Julie?
I just want to say I really appreciate all of the stepping of the massing. I feel like it's probably the most successful concept I've seen so far when the, of these big buildings and that I hope, you know, you keep that in your final presentation because it's, I, I feel like this works even better than the buildings we've reviewed before.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we, we, this is a very special site and I think that's very important to our goal. So we will, we will definitely keep pursuing that. I'm pretty, I'm confident we can achieve it.
Mr. Lesko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up on two of the comments that Mr. McCoy made with questions. The first, you mentioned that if I'm getting this right, there'd be seven hundred and sixty occupants of the building and then an additional four hundred and twenty-four by twenty forty-two. Do you know or have a kind of ballpark number right now of how many of those, those occupants will be, you know, undergraduate students versus faculty and staff versus even graduate students? You know, and the reason why I'm asking is obviously because of housing and transportation.
So those numbers are the individuals who have an office space and a seat in the building. So that would be faculty, faculty, research groups, post-docs, graduate students and staff. It does not include the undergraduates, which will be coming, which are, we consider transient population for classrooms. They will, these will all have classrooms in them. But these, these are, and this is all dovetailed with the the current university student body population of undergraduate. This is not triggering the growth of the student body. However, research brings the best faculty in the world, that bring the best postdocs in the world. And so the graduate student population does grow as, as new facilities in science and research are added to the campus. And that's, that's, that's where the growth comes from.
A quick follow-up then. How far is this site from the Butler tract? And you don't have to, you don't have to answer that.
Closer than most.
Understood. My second actual question was going to be, you mentioned a parking study and that'll come later. And I guess this isn't as much of a question, but just when you're doing that, I'm curious to see, you know, there's a real mix of uses in this area now where soccer games might be nights and weekends, football games might be, you know, six Saturdays a year or whatever it is. And I'd be curious to see how those uses are reflected in those numbers, you know, perhaps differently than, than we often see with, you know, residential or just working.
Okay, yeah, we will, we will do that. It is a, it's an advantage because they, they trade off against each other, right? During the daytime, it's occupied by faculty and staff. Nighttime and weekends is occupied by events. So it's a good shared parking model. We've, we've had experience with that. So we will definitely demonstrate all of that.
Great.
It's very close to the Meadows graduate housing.
If only you had a bridge across the lake.
If only. Okay, stay tuned. We're a long time.
Owen O'Donnell?
Thank you. Want to talk about stormwater for a minute. When we heard the presentation on the soccer practice fields, I recall that there was quite a sophisticated stormwater drainage system that was being put in. Is this going to take advantage of that being so close? And I assume most of the stormwater will drain towards like Carnegie?
Interesting you should ask that question. That system does not serve under the new regulations as a legitimate stormwater retention system for the stormwater now. So we built it. The water will come, but we can't count it as part of, as part of our meeting on stormwater regulations. So this, this, this project will have to stand alone. That, that stormwater system that we built excess capacity for under soccer still has a beneficial, it benefits the overall environment, but this project will have to meet all of its stormwater management regulations onsite without tapping into that system.
Okay, thank you.
Which is really extraordinary. Well, I mean, no, I, I, I would not, I, I I feel differently about it. I mean, it'll be really interesting to see how you do it, especially with the year twenty one hundred rainfall projections and, you know, for other board members who maybe aren't on the flood and stormwater commission. The DEP and the town are requiring applicants plan for rainfall projected for the year twenty one hundred, which is a lot, a lot. And it's a, it's a high standard and so I commend you for, for committing to meeting it and it'll be really interesting to see, you know, how that happens.
I think it will be very interesting, but we, as I said in my comments, we started this project by, by telling ourselves that we have to start with the stormwater management. That's the, this project needs to be designed from that point. That needs to be the determinant factor. So that's how we've kind of flipped the switch there. Rather than design a building and accommodate stormwater, we're starting with stormwater and then making the building work for that strategy.
Yep, that's, that's terrific. Just as Julie complimented the step up, which I agree very much with, I noticed lots and lots of glass, lots and lots of natural light in the building. And I hope that survives the, the design process as well because just seems like, you know, not only attractive, but very good for people who are inside.
And just, and bird safe, I must say.
Oh, good. Great. Thank you. I can you bring up slide twenty four? I'm going to ask a question, which I realize you might not right now be in a position to answer, but when we were looking at the ES and C's project, there was that area to the southeast of that site, which is to the north of this site. It was open and remains open in slide twenty four. And I just wondered whether you are in a position to sharing any information right now about whether you expect that to stay open because it seems like a nice break? Or whether that's going to be, you know, something else in the future?
That is definitely going to be a future building site. I think in some of our studies, when we, when we presented the environmental studies and C's project, we had shown a footprint there and said future building. So that will be part, that would part of the School of Engineering and Applied Science will occupy that site.
Okay, good to know.
We don't have the timing on it, but that will occupy that site.
All right. I just have one other thought or just an expression of interest. I was really interested to see in your graphic, the attention to DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion in your design process and interior and exterior presumably. And I, I'll be really interested to know down the line what that looks like and whether you're and what you learn from that. I mean, without going into a ton of, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a really interesting thing to be looking at in the design process and I'd love to have more insight when the time comes.
We'd be happy to share. In a few months, we will have the product of the the work that we've been doing with our behavioral scientists and our building scientists as they have, they've engaged in a sort of multifaceted survey, observation, focus group, pop up with students to ask questions about, you know, what makes a space, do you have, what, what gives a sense, a space a sense of belonging? Or do you feel, do you feel welcome? And then there are also emerging in design fields, greater attention to neurodiversity and issues of acoustics, daylight, settings that, settings that respond or are more comfortable for people on a neurodiverse spectrum. So we're paying more attention to those as we, as we design facilities. So we'll have to find some way to share that with you.
Yeah, really interesting. Thank you. You can stop sharing your screen now.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just actually wanted to second that feeling, Louise. I, I would love to hear more about this initiative and, you know, similar to what, what you did for us maybe a year ago, where you did present your campus-wide strategies for, you know, sustainability and for stormwater and stuff like that. This and parking, this seems to me to be equally deserving of a, a special presentation to the board if if you're willing and we can find a date.
Yeah, I'd like to. I hope, I hope to share it with other professional colleagues in different conferences as well, because I think, I think it's cutting edge. I don't think anyone in this country has done it frankly, what we're doing.
That's great. Add that to the list. Princeton does first. Okay, any other, before we go to invite questions and comments, thoughts from the public, are there any other questions from board members? Or you know what? I saw Mr. Bridger that you turned your camera on, so maybe you have something. And Mr. Muller, you look like you do too. So Derek?
I was just going to suggest where you were going, which was giving our professionals an opportunity to ask questions. But Derek, if you could raise your right hand.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
And is Dan here as well?
Dan, can you, you'll get sworn in at the same time. So you can raise your right hand.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Self sworn or affirmed?
Thank you. So I see the staggered site plan, which will have like, I guess, two buildings initially and then at the end, you're, you're saying four buildings, but just so we're all on the same page zoning wise, we consider it one building at the end of the day. So I just want to make sure, it looks like you're well under the hundred foot height limitation, but it's based on the the worst case of average or grade based on existing or proposed. So we just want to make sure that, I'm sure that's your, your eyesight, so, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, it's a good reminder. Yes, we're designing that way and we'll keep that in mind for sure.
Work. Great, thanks.
Thank you, Derek. Dan Weisman, anything to ask or add?
Derek, the only thing that I would piggyback on top of that is essentially the same thing runs with stormwater management. If it is divided up into three separate locations, it is a common plan of development. So it would all encapsulate under one, under one major project. So just something to keep in mind as, as you're developing your stormwater plans.
Correct.
And Justin Lesko.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I think most of the comments from our report were covered, but I do want to discuss a few of them. The first question, is there any intention to continue the kind of perimeter pathways that are wider right now by the soccer field? And I believe from the football stadium to the edge of this site will be wider as a result of the ES and C's. You know, it seems like right now it kind of goes from a four-foot path to maybe a eight or ten, maybe even bigger around the perimeter on Fitz Randolph, all the way to faculty. Obviously, you know, the idea about meandering, if you're going to the building is great, but for those passing through, is there any intention to kind of match those pathways around the block?
We're not there yet, but we, and we want to, I think, work from the fact that we have the complete street on Ivy Lane and we have Shero's on Fitz Randolph. We then want to supplement that with responding to primary desire lines with pathways that are the appropriate width. So I think, and then knit that to get to the existing pathways. I would say that the pathway that leads up to soccer is extra wide because it's also a fire lane. So I wouldn't take that as a, as a standard. But I hear your point. I mean, if the point is to make sure that these pathways are wide enough to achieve shared use standards where pedestrians and cyclists can share them if they, if it's designed for pedestrians and cyclists, we will do that.
Okay, understood. And let's see, is there any intention to put any sort of public art or statues like by the football field or anything like that within?
We have a campus-wide public art, campus art program. We have not looked, we're busy trying to focus on the current generation of projects. So I would say that that's a to be determined.
Okay, got it. And one note I want to make for the board. In Mr. McCoy's presentation, if you're wondering why he was showing the property lines as kind of going across the street, which is different than, than we often see. Both the streets, Fitz Randolph and Ivy Lane are private roads. So the university, you know, the, the actual property line is across rather than what we normally see to the edge of a road or even measured to the middle of a line at times. So with that being said, my, my last question, if you could just give any more information, I know you mentioned the geothermal boreholes and wanting to put them throughout the site. I know by this point, Princeton University and other universities, I saw in that New York Times article recently, have some experience in attenuating the sound and, and, you know, making for a better kind of construction experience. Are there any, you know, kind of things that the university would intend to do based on, you know, now having done this in a few places and a few jurisdictions even?
Yes, this will be, we consider this our third generation of geo exchange wells. So the first, the first generation of drilling were, was primarily that was the soccer field and the parking garage. We're now all engaged in our second generation of drilling at Hope Field, which is in the center of the campus and on the, in the Meadows neighborhood. And then this will be the next generation. As each generation of drilling occurs, we're adopting and implementing more and more sound attenuation systems. So right now, we are fully wrapping the engine of the drill rigs with, with, in a kind of, a kind of perimeter of sound blankets. And then we are, we will be developing a system at the perimeter of the site that adds another layer of sound, of sound blanketing around the perimeter of the site. So, so I think, and I think that is state of the art. That's as much as one can do. And I think that we will expect to see some very beneficial results from this next generation of sound attenuation better than we've been able to achieve on any of our other projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for those questions, Justin. David Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to also follow up with one of the questions actually from PEC. You know, they had made recommendations about choosing building materials that were lower environmentally impact like the mass timber and so forth. Have, have you given any thought yet, Ron, to what the, the construction of the building is likely to be?
Yes, we Yes, um, we have, and, um, we imagine it to be what you see with the environmental studies and CE's buildings going up, where you have a steel frame for the vibration-sensitive labs. And then the mass timber for the offices and everything else. So that's exciting when you, when you see that project under construction, which is the largest Dow laminated timber structure in North America. Uh, that's, that's exciting to see. So we, uh, will use the same strategy here. We have extremely vibration-sensitive labs that have to go on bedrock in the lowest level of the building. And then less vibration-sensitive labs, but still sensitive because their labs will be in steel frame above. And then the aspiration would be everything else would be, uh, mass timber.
Right. Thanks.
Um, other questions from board members or staff? Anything you want to add, Jerry, before we go to public comment?
No.
Okay, so, um, we have 26 people, um, in the attendees room. Uh, right now, if you're there and would like to address, uh, the board or pose questions to the applicant, um, now is your opportunity to do so. You just click on raise hand, uh, at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And, um, you'll be brought over and you'll have up to three minutes. I'm not seeing any hands go up.
You know, half of the members of the public are employees of the university.
Yes, I'm, I'm picking up on that. Uh, but not every last one, which maybe speaks to the value of your, um, meetings with neighbors. I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I'm going to close public comment. But I would like, um, Mr. McCoy to hear about the meetings you've had with neighbors and, uh, if you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure, we had, uh, two open house sessions, uh, in Robertson Hall. And, uh, in each case, we had, um, some of the drawings that we showed you through tonight. We had the, uh, axonometric. In that case, we had the one that looked from the loading dock side, uh, toward the neighborhood. And we had, you know, plans and sections. We had, um, we outnumbered our neighbors with our staff. So we had lots of people answering, answering questions as we typically do. I would say that, um, there was, um, understanding and respect for the design, as been, has been noted here today, the kind of sensitivity that the design has to the edges. I think all the issues come down to the construction process, the excavation, the sound, uh, blasting, to the extent it's going to be required. Assurances that, uh, we will, we will do the same kind of protocols we did for ES and C's to work with the neighbors on this, on those strategies. Access for construction, it's really about the disruption of the actual construction process that I think, uh, was the primary takeaway. We, we had lots of conversation with different neighbors about that. And we have lots of, uh, lots of good experience, I think, of how to, how to manage that.
And what is the time horizon that you expect? Is this over three years, four years?
The construction period, um, will be a, a three-year construction period. But you know, the first year, well, I'd say four years if you, well, let's say, let's say three is to build the building. And in advance of that, as much time as we can get to do drilling before we can, before we start construction. That's, that would be for quantum. Then, then each building would have a kind of similar schedule of, of periods, period of drilling, say six to nine months, a period of construction for 30 months, 36 months.
Oh, so you won't do drilling site-wide and then build buildings? You're going to do them in three stages each?
Yes, we will, we will, the, we are, we will phase the, 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 the drilling.
Okay.
Because we can't, we can't drill unless we know the foundations for the building.
Mm-hmm. Complicated. Um, okay, any other, any other questions from, oh, there is one, one member of the public. Even though I closed public comment, I'm going to reopen. We have one member of the public who has, um, their hand up. That is Kirk Gastinger. If you could bring that person over. Um, if you could, Mr. Gastinger, um, there you go. I was going to say activate your camera. You were a step ahead of me. Um, Mr. Muller will swear you in, so we'll need you to raise your right hand. He can never see you before you speak, so go ahead, Mr. Muller. He's got his hand raised.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, uh, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Kirk Gastinger, G-A-S-T-I-N-G-E-R.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Uh, very briefly, I'm, uh, uh, a member of the Environmental Commission. And so we had an opportunity to review some of the earlier presentations. And all I, I want to say is, uh, two things. One is, uh, this is the most unbelievable and comprehensive design project. I think it's just, uh, going to be a fantastic opportunity for the university and the town. Uh, as one of the members of the commission, we feel that there should be a really larger emphasis as Mr., uh, I think Mr. Cohen had asked about the production of energy. And, uh, the commitment to being able to produce energy through solar is, uh, very, uh, possible on this particular site because it's so wide open. So we, uh, really hope that there would be a larger commitment to balancing the energy, uh, consumption of the building as well as being able to make energy.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So I'm not seeing any other members of the public put their hands up. I'll just give it one more shot. If you would like to speak, now's the time to raise your hand. Seeing none, I will again close public, uh, comment portion of the meeting. Any last thoughts from board members or staff? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Degrasia. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Really, really interesting project and, uh, look forward to seeing it unfold in the coming years.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the comments and the feedback. It means a lot.
Good, good. I'm glad.
Thank you.
So with, uh, no further business, Mr. Cohen?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, well, um, next week, special meeting. And, uh, so, see you then. Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Interesting conversation.
Have a good night.
Yep.
Yes.